All right, we are gathered here today for our October 2nd. Select work meeting, Linda's running a little late, so she's asked me to fill in. And our first, first thing to do here is ask her, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, two adjustments to the agenda. One is to discuss and possibly vote on fluorescent fixture upgrades. Pictures, we have a grant and the final price, like to get that voted on, that's for the town office and library. The second is to discuss and vote on the snow guard situation for the library.
And we'll do that during select review and action?
Yes.
Anything else? Top thing, all right, next, approving the minutes of September 18th. I have to, I have to restate our reason here, so.
We're making motion.
I'll stop you. Perfect, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, September 18th, say aye.
Aye.
Comments, correspondence from the community, Michelle, you have anything?
No, I don't have Linda has any.
I don't have anything, so moving on, look at us, we're just killing the clock.
Well, you could move it down, and if she shows up later, let's do that.
Uh, yeah, let's, let's postpone that until Linda gets here, if she has something. Uh, which brings us to, we're also gonna have to move number five here, the Lemoyle Area Recovery Network Funding Recap. It looks like Sarah's not, oh.
She's in the parking lot.
She's in the parking lot. Let's go through the project manager's report quickly before she gets in. Kurt, that's you.
Hey, can you hear me? You can. Great. So, a few things have changed in terms of our FEMA recovery. Right now, we've been working with Jones Road. And Jones Road came in at a hundred and eight thousand on the bid. And that was by recommendation from Northern, Northern Architects Dexter. And FEMA has come back and modified that to twenty-four thousand. So they have reduced our, our request by quite a substantial amount. Their calculations, according to them, are showing that, that is what it should cost us to repair Jones Road. Our engineer and Isaac, who is our contractor, begs to differ. And typically, what we've experienced to date is that whatever the contractor has come up with, including with, in conjunction with the engineer, has been very close to what FEMA and CRC has approved. So this is quite unusual, and it's quite a substantial cut. Last time I spoke with Linda, we are considering, and the board obviously should be thinking about this, and would be a part of the decision whether to or not to, but to go to appeal. And to appeal this decision of twenty-four thousand dollars versus a hundred and eight thousand dollars. It just doesn't make sense to us in discussion with the engineer, with discussion with the contractor. It just could not be done for the amount that FEMA is requesting. This particular project had been surveyed by FEMA physically, they had come to town and physically surveyed it. And this really kind of came as quite a surprise. Because the logic just doesn't, doesn't seem to be there. Now, in the, in consideration of the appeal, what you need to know is that in order to appeal with FEMA, you first have to accept the twenty-four thousand and say, yeah, we'll take the twenty-four thousand, but we want to appeal the difference. And then secondly, it, it, going into appeal would put all of our smaller projects into question. And so if you appeal this, then you're actually appealing all small projects. Which is kind of an interesting way to make it quite difficult to appeal. So I'll just throw that out to you, we have not, we have informed FEMA that we intend to appeal. We have not formally gone through the appeal process. And this really is a board decision, where to, how to go forward with this. But it is quite onerous to, to appeal. I can tell you that they, although I used to talk about Labor Day being the day when everything is obligated, that's come and gone. And now Halloween seems to be the new big target. And, but I can tell you that we are on track for about a million, one hundred thousand dollars in obligated funds that have yet to be realized. So that would put our total grant to a little over two million dollars, which is approximately what we've always thought that it would be, approximately over two million dollars. That is pending any other changes, anything else that happens. As you know, the federal funds for FEMA are still frozen. So there is no money coming onto the table specifically. I don't think anything's gonna happen until after the election. I think the situation in North Carolina is putting a lot of pressure on the politicians to do something. And hopefully Vermont doesn't get swept up in the, in the backwater of that situation. I have no reason to say that, that's just my personal, my personal concern. The, in, in, going back to the appeal for just a minute, in, in the overall scope of things, what FEMA is saying is that, if you add up everything, we have made claims on eighteen different projects. And CRC, being FEMA, has come up with their own numbers based on our scope and reports. And in some cases, they're more than what we had requested. Seldomly have they been less, with this one exception for Jones Road. And so in discussion with them around Jones Road, there is an argument that says, well, you know, at the end of the day, when we're all closed out, when this is all said and done, you probably will have gotten more money than you requested. To me, that is kind of a funny way to do accounting. Not quite certain accounting. But I, in, in looking at each project and the reports on each project, that is, it's kind of a viable comment they're making, is yeah, I think we will end up with a little bit more money than we requested, but not, nothing very substantial. I understand that Flatiron is moving along. And the Town Hill Culvert has been obligated, that's over eight hundred thousand dollars. And that has been moved over to the state of Vermont. And of course, once the project gets to the state, FEMA is out of it, they've allocated their money. Now we have to go through a process with the state. And that includes inspection. I understand that Michelle Redman, our V-Trans rep, had been out and has inspected the Town Hill Culvert, and I believe that is the final step before we actually can get a check in the mail. That is the only exception to the federal freeze, and it's because it was obligated just a couple of days before the federal freeze, so we were, we're really fortunate to get that money. So that's really all I have at this point, I, I, I do think that the important takeaway for the board is this issue of appeal. And I'm happy to answer any questions about it, or after you guys discuss it, I'm always available.
Should the board choose to appeal, is there a deadline?
For the appeal, is there a deadline? No, because we haven't applied for it yet. They are pushing, they want us to accept their number. And if we decide to go to appeal, the first step is we have to accept their number and then appeal the difference. I don't think they're gonna let us sit on our hands for too long, but we certainly have two weeks until the next board meeting. So that's what I got.
All right, thanks Kurt.
All right, thank you.
So, Sarah?
Hi. Can I just jump on in, all right? Hi, everybody, thanks for having me, my name is Sarah Hinshaw. I'm the coordinator for what's known as the Lemoyle Area Recovery Network, we like to call it Learn. The small E. And we are the long-term recovery groups for the, for flood impacted households for the whole county. And we've been in existence for about, almost a year. When FEMA, our friends FEMA, came to town, they asked that the county form a group to help folks that didn't have the means to help repair or cover their houses, to form a group. And so we are all Lemoyle residents, we all work across the Health and Human Service organizations in the county. And we've been working with a pool of funds that the United Way raised following the flooding to help folks with repairs. We match folks to other funding, we help them fill forms, also the bureaucracy, and navigate. We're not FEMA, we don't get government funds, we don't get state funds, we just, it's all funded through either the media foundation or donations, the vast majority of us are volunteers. And I just wanted to let you guys know that we exist, we've been helping folks here in Walcott. So, you know, we've helped about thirty households here in Walcott in different ways. Everything from helping replace the septic system, the waste water systems approved. There was no way to kind of with that, to helping folks, you know, rebuild entire houses. If there is a flood or other smaller disaster, we would still be available for anybody, for any residents. We also have what we're calling a lending library, so that there's like fans and dehumidifiers and pumps and cleaning supplies. So you guys know that you guys will need them, we can either bring them down to the town office and they'll be available for folks right here, right before the flood. Or you can direct folks to us. I brought, this is kind of our community report, to see if you guys have any thoughts of interest. Just wanted to give you a sense that we are done. But quick, we get. Yeah, I've been working with Linda. Of course. I guess two, and then, and then tell me exactly what I'm in it for, and so, I'm just following instructions. The, the last thing that I'm just gonna note is that we've been talking to, like, we've talked to every kind of select board around, hope we have, yeah, but we are scheduled to. And we're also talking to emergency managers, just because, you know, we're never gonna be doing that immediate, that's not what we do. But folks who might be in a shelter, might have been evacuated, or might need, you know, had their flood, you know, the, you know, emergency, the, you know, the emergency director came in and helped people get out. We're, here are people that can come in and help folks kind of get settled and figure out what to do next. Especially folks that don't really have the need to do that, or don't have insurance, or FEMA's not coming, because it's a small emergency, so. So I'd like to make sure you get programmed or here, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Any suggestions you might have, you've heard things in the towns, it's like, okay, I'm gonna do that, 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 but I'll also do that.
I think what you guys are doing is awesome, I'm glad you came in.
I have one question. I had my meter box flooded out.
Yep.
And it cost me three thousand dollars plus to replace and move it. Is there any funding for that?
There absolutely could be, so if you, you know, and you can help me try to move that out. At the bottom of that, see at the bottom of the cheater? And the very bottom, learn at UW, it's small. Follow us at We're Glasses, and maybe I should make it a little bit bigger.
Oh, it's not, it doesn't even show.
Oh, does it? Okay. And Linda's definitely, she didn't find out her, she can find me, if you can't find me, like, that. Yeah, so there's a couple of different sources of funding that is available for maybe meter boxes that I can think of. Making sure that they've been reconnected, we had a couple houses where folks have come in and we tried to reconnect it, and it did not. The contractor did a poor job, so yeah, we have. Good thing, yes. Are there good questions? And do you have any questions?
I'm sorry.
Did you add anything new than what I thought?
No, you've told more than I probably knew. So, yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, of course, so yeah, always, you know, feel free to give out my phone number, my email. Yeah, as far as I can come up.
So is the funding for the buyouts held up because of COVIDers?
That's what I'm hearing, but I haven't, I, Matt's trying to help me figure out kind of where that is before I send out any updates. Have you heard anything?
No, I'm just assuming.
Yes, because FEMA fundings have been frozen. Yeah, which would be really devastating.
Yeah, so I have some that are really closed, but.
Yeah, I thought you had one that the, the priestels came back.
Well, I have six that are a little different funding.
Okay.
I haven't got any FEMA ones, but.
I don't think anybody has. You were the, I mean, you were the first, Cambridge was second, you guys had the first, and I think all of yours were state funded, yeah?
Six, seven.
Nine were, okay. And Cambridge has two that were state funded, that are almost done, or they're not done, and then they have the rest of theirs, of all. And then Johnsons are all FEMA, they haven't even submitted. I mean, across the county, there's forty-eight units that we're losing. A significant amount of house and stuff. If somebody asks me a question, I can say that's positive. That's not the way I really wanted to exit.
Is there any way that we could maybe post something like this on our website?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely. You can, I can send it, Linda didn't mind if I sent it to electronically and you can post that. And I also, we also have like, just an information flyer about who we are, who we do. I can send both of those, and you guys are, please do, we'd love that.
That's good.
It's the United Way paper, I can't speak to where the email, thanks. Thanks to best, how you do, I'm gonna go feed my children.
So, we've missed your deal, thank you for being back.
Yep, I'll let you continue, it's all good practice.
Yeah. The only thing we, we moved was comments and correspondence, to know if you had anything.
I don't see anything.
Fantastic, that was great. We've already heard from Kurt, and that brings us to.
What, you did?
Yeah. Would you like to recap?
I have to know until Chris.
Thank you.
Well, hey, there's, there's a big question, he needs to talk to you about.
Yeah, the, the appeal. We thought that we might think about that, and we said that next week, he said there's no deadline, not next week, next meeting. There's no deadline on the appeal to start, until we start.
Is he on there?
Yes, yes, he's still there.
I'm here.
Did you come up with, did you find any money?
Did I find any?
Extra money?
Oh, yeah, you know, I think there are several projects which, in which CRC, FEMA, had estimated a higher value than we had submitted. And so there is some money through that process, not a huge amount. And I did not find enough money in that process to offset Jones Road. I think that with Jones Road, you know, we can, right now, they're, they are offering twenty-four thousand, four forty. And with found money, it comes up to about sixty-five thousand.
And we're short?
Yeah, no, sixty-five against a hundred and eight, so, yeah.
And we've got, and they found thirty on Town Hill, so.
There's, yeah, there's extra money there, yes. Is that your question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could find any other money. So we're basically short thirty-five.
Right, right. In the end, as I was telling the board earlier, when we start to look at what they intend to have obligated by the end of this month, we'll be right at two million, two million, one hundred thousand dollars in FEMA reimbursement. Which is about where we thought it was gonna be from the get-go. There is the concern, I mean, I, it's, it's a factor in the decision as to how much we're gonna open up all of our other small projects as a result of requesting an appeal. You know, that Parker has deferred on that, he's not really responding to that request. But we have heard it from Andy a couple of times now.
Kurt, are you just referring to twenty-twenty-three projects, or twenty-twenty-four as well?
I'm pointing to.
Just twenty-three?
Twenty-three only, yeah.
You're saying that it kind of leaves us exposed or vulnerable, so it kind of shuts down any of the other projects moving forward until we get results from this appeal?
Right, and that actually opens up all of the small projects to reevaluation from FEMA's point. Right now, those small projects are done, closed, and waiting for obligation and for the feds to release some money. What we're hearing is that if we open up an appeal, it, it could very well open up all those small projects, and you're kind of back to square one.
What is confusing to me is in the olden days, they'd come up and they'd say, this is what we think this project, it will take to fix this project, that throw money at us, and then we could fix it for that, and if there was money left over, it was our match, or we got to keep it. Now they're wanting the, all these bids, which we submit, and engineering and stuff. So there isn't like this wiggle room for all, so I don't know where they're coming up with, you know, we're gonna open up a can of worms and they're gonna look at everything again. They look at everything the first time, and I hope we did a good job the first time. I mean, I'm not afraid of them, I'm tired of them.
Yeah, I, you know. I know, it, it, it feels, it doesn't feel right.
No, it doesn't.
And what really doesn't feel right to me is this huge discrepancy on Jones Road, I just don't get that, I just don't get it.
Someone moved.
Someone what?
Moved their paperwork.
Yeah, oh, that, yeah, yeah, it starts to feel like something like that, yeah.
This, this, so this is where my head goes, is it possible that they're going to be doing this more and more because they don't have funds, and so they've been told to cut back on every project? Or, or on major projects?
Yeah.
I don't know. They were good with, they were good with the Town Hill Culvert.
That was before they had put that freeze on everything.
I mean, I've really been happy with the response from them all along. Because really, they're taking our bids, they're taking our engineering evaluation, and in some cases, they even up it a little bit. But this one just throws me, I don't get it.
Who is, is the same person doing this revaluation as, as the person who actually okayed it? I mean, who got it, so it's not Parker doing, as you said, right?
No, no, it's, it's a bureaucracy, I mean, this goes from desk to desk to desk, and sometimes it bounces through Boston, and, you know, it's all over the place, you never get the same people. Parker is the only consistent thing there.
What does Kim advise us to do? If she can?
He is really taking a position.
And based on? So Kim has no advice?
Yeah, it's hands off, I mean, what Parker's position is that it's up, it's up to the town what you want to do, which is the standard response, you know? You're not gonna get advice from him, let's put it that way.
But Kim has no, is totally.
So our liaison is in the flag, he's between the feds and Vermont Emergency Management. So he's been assigned to us to, trying to protect us, guide us.
Right, right.
It was just his boss.
It almost sounds like somebody screwed up some of the paperwork. While somebody or something, it should be.
They'll never own up to that.
Oh, I know, but yeah, if, if the paperwork was recent, and then say, hey, look, you don't want to peel it, but look at what was agreed upon.
So at, at the end of all of it, Kurt, at the end of all of the twenty-three projects, with all of the funding, if FEMA unfreezes funds and they continue and they obligate all the things that we have completed, versus, you know, this, this, what is a seventy-five thousand dollar deficit?
Close to that, yeah.
How much short are we really, what is that actual figure?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. Into my, in my calculations, we're just about right on. Now, I do not, I have not done all of the internal WOCA accounting as to how much did we actually, how much have we spent since July of twenty-three?
But the, the bids versus the FEMA projected allocations versus what it looks like FEMA's gonna reimburse us, including.
uh, versus what it looks like FEMA is gonna reimburse us, including this seventy five thousand dollar hit? We look like we're gonna be made whole?
Yes, yeah. I, that's my, my accounting. The way to really answer that question is, uh, which I'm sure is pretty easy to do. I think that Belinda probably can take, what have we spent? Um, you know, and come up with a solid number there. I have a pretty good feeling for it and that's why I say that two million dollars looks just about right. But it would be good to verify that from, you know, internal, from the treasurer, yeah.
The trouble is I don't keep the invoices anymore, so I don't know what the costs are. You have them. Um, but let's remember, even like the Town Hill Culver, they only paid seventy five percent of it. Uh, we have to pay twelve percent of that and, you know, it's like two hundred thousand. So we're not gonna be equal, even Stevens. And in the past, we've had the road crew do a lot of the jobs and we could make up that difference because we could charge for their force to la- labor, their uh, equipment use and so forth. But they're not hardly doing anything, so we don't, we're not able to get that match.
Yeah, we did charge, I mean, initially the road, the road crew did all of the initial work and that was all paid for or charged to FEMA.
Yeah, all the little road ditching things.
Yeah, yeah. Right, right. But the big projects, no, those were all contracted out.
All right, we're fine. I guess you guys decided next week we'll, we'll try to get better figures together and make a decision.
Good to have those figures and also I think another round, uh, maybe a face to face, a face to face, a phone to phone with Andy would be good.
Yeah.
Andy is, is, you know, he's our liaison. He's the one that should be able to answer this question. Right now, his, his most recent response is that he does not recommend that we go to appeal. It's only, it feels like you're being punished, you know? Like, don't appeal, because uh, if you do, there's gonna be trouble out here.
Yeah, almost feels like extortion.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
All right, well, thanks again, Kurt. Um, uh, that brings us to item seven.
Um, so I've gone on my map for like seven hours. Uh, just transferring a lot of this post, uh, this, um, just early post flood photos over and getting them labeled. Uh, we got through a couple of the roads, we did three roads. Um, uh, we revised some of the FEMA project costs that he initially estimated. We're trying to come up with more of an accurate revision before we meet. Uh, we meet with FEMA folks. We have a design project manager for the twenty four flood and we meet with him, I think it's a Ross, um, forgot his name, but we will be meeting next, um, Tuesday, yeah, on the eighth. Um, that's for the initial meeting. And then we started a culvert inventory, the, uh, so we're just going through all the culverts and, um, updating them in the database so that I can, uh, we can use that as a better projection for budgets for culvert replacements. Um, so we're starting on all of that, meeting again on next Monday with the full road crew so that I can get their time sheets for FEMA really solidified. So we're gonna meet for about four hours, five hours, whatever it takes. Um, I don't know if I, I said this, but I think we received it afterward. We received a thousand dollar grant from Ocean City Vermont to, uh, for the lighting, uh, fixture upgrades for fluorescents, front fluorescents to LED. And I wanted to talk about that either now or later, but we did receive that grant, um, I'm moving forward. So Gould Electric revised his bid, so it would be total now fifty nine fifty and then we have a thousand dollars coming in to pay part of that. And then that replaces, it, uh, ref- refurbishes these fixtures. Um, it's a.
Fifty five thousand?
Yeah. Forty nine fifty, uh, and then a grant, the grant would be forty nine fifty.
Are there any other bids on that?
Might another bid.
I'm just curious, just curious.
This is just over here, whatever happened to the girls?
There, we're still waiting to be signed. I mean, we got a percent, but they're still waiting on it. So this is the one. I've got the RFPs out for our Pines Road and, uh, West Hill Roads. Those have been, uh, um, reviewed with by Lucian and Belinda and myself and, um, I have, I'll present to you later, we can do it now, it's, it's under the select board review action. Uh, anyway, I also have Elmore, uh, East Elmore Road that, um, RFP closes tonight, so we'll have that one for the next select board meeting. Oh, you are. Um, I have advertised, as you know, we, uh, uh, we resigned, so I've advertised to the animal control officer, they can see. I've not had any, anyone from anybody. Um, addressed a lot of public questions and requests, so, um, just they're, they're flowing in now for roads and just other things. Um, working on, um, an idea for, there's an ARPA grant, four thousand dollars for winter placemaking um, for senior citizens. And so I'm trying to work with Linda Brady. She's leaving the country, but, um, she's giving me some other names to maybe get a small proposal in for, for some sort of winter events, like, um, little seminars for the elderly. It could involve children too. We haven't decided, but I have to read the grant really closely. Um, I'd like to know from the board when you want us to stop paying for the portlet and have it taken away. Um, we pay one ninety a month and most other rail trails, so remove it for the winter. Um, they usually remove it November first. I know that we are paid up through, we paid for October. Um, but we have the bill, so we should get on that soon, if you want to have it taken away until spring.
Yeah, I would say that November, November third is, is fine.
Yeah, just whatever we did last year, I guess, if I didn't deal with it, Belinda would know from our records.
Maybe it doesn't recall, I don't.
Well, she could go on there and figure out what her last bill was.
Let's do that. I mean, I have the bill.
It's got a pretty long one to go in there, you know.
It's gonna freeze anyway.
Right. We ended up with the transfer station, are you?
That's for staff.
Yeah, did you, just, I mean, he said freeze.
Oh, I see. No, usually they go away right around the summer.
Or it used to be all the way.
They don't do nothing or anywhere. If you're just, I know. Um, so yes, stop it. Okay. Um, Floyd Furnace, Livi, you want to go stick up to, um, to the Floyd Furnace?
I just wanted Bob to call him up and have him read it.
Oh, I thought he wanted to, he thought he wanted, he wanted to know uh, what that plan was, if we wanted to, to buy into the four hundred eighteen dollar per year plan. Um, and it doesn't really buy you much. So if we buy into that, they offer a Floyd Care Club. It was emailed to us and you don't really get a lot. You get one annual plumbing inspection, one complimentary electrical inspection. You get emergency dispatch fees are dropped, uh, are one hundred fifty. Of the regular dispatch, these are reduced from one forty nine to sixty nine dollars and you get one complimentary. You get a yearly maintenance and inspection of your two HVAC system for no charge. So all of that gets you five hundred, is five hundred thirty nine dollars per year. For four hundred eighteen dollars per year, you get all of that except for your annual plumbing inspection or your complimentary electrical inspection, which I don't think we need. But so you could pay four hundred eighteen dollars per year and get a, a free maintenance every year and then we got reduced services on any other policy you have. Or we could use Jake Miller, who is local and he for the past two years has been cleaning and inspecting our propane, you know, any, all of the town office and library and town garage, um, uh, systems. And he does do oil and propane. He maintains those for a hundred fifty dollars per service and he recommends for propane, just doing it every other year. It's not quite like oil. So in my mind, it's a better, it's up to you, but it's, it's just, we should just probably continue to instead of going with Lloyd's.
So when you read what it says in there about Lloyd's, um, warranty? Uh, if we spend for service? What did it say?
Oh, here, it says no lending guarantee. If we provide continuous annual routine maintenance and heat exchanger in your furnace and if the, uh, heat exchanger in furnace fails in the first ten years, we don't just replace the defective heat exchanger, we install a completely furnace. I'm always skeptical here though, because you get that and then saying, oh, something else, you know?
Well, and and half a piece of that is that if, if we were going from a hundred and fifty a year to four hundred a year, you know, by the time ten years runs around, what's the heat exchanger cost that we have received that money?
Right.
And especially because it sounds like it'd be seventy five, you know, you'd be having a great one. You know, I, I tend to agree with Michelle. I think we ought to use the local guy who has been doing all of the other service.
And he usually will go ten to a year.
There's no problem. The lifespan on, on the equipment is, you know, ten, fifteen years anyway. So that's, that's my feeling, because the local dude who's been doing it, things are good.
More about that?
I mean, it's, uh, under review and action, I just brought it up now because I was working on it. I don't know, we can, we can move it around.
I think you better find it sooner based on time of year, because everyone's probably, you know, wanting to get their stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I suppose, you know, just do it now, Michelle, we'll just take a motion on it now.
We can motion to, um, hire, is it, have that?
Jake Miller?
Yeah, to have that company. Enlisted is his company name to clean our Town Hall furnace.
Need a maintain? Just clean.
That's not boring.
I don't know what we do.
One second. Awesome. All right, first and a second, all those in favor?
Right.
All right.
So, so let me read the motion and. Then, um, it's come across my desk that, um, we allow, that we have four letters from, uh, from property owners who allow us to be dumping on the town, uh, on their property and they're already signed. Kurt, Kurt, uh, was able to get those. They do read however, that they allow just the Town and Wocat to dump, fill when they're doing roadwork on their property. I think it's in our best interest that we have contractors now who are doing work for the Town of Wocat to, um, change, upgrade, uh, you know, revise those letters and include, um, to read the Town of Wocat and/or its contracted representatives are allowed to, to dump, fill.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Thank you.
All right, cool. Which brings us to select board review in action. Uh, vote repeal the two thousand two classification plan and amend the two thousand sixteen. We've talked about this last time. Kurt, Paul, anybody have anything they'd like to say, add, change?
I think Kurt has two motions about that.
Yeah, we probably need to repeal the, um, plan and then amend or revise the policy.
I'll make the motion to repeal two thousand two classification plan.
Any seconds? Oh, second. All right, motion on the floor, I throw this question. All those in favor?
Fine.
And now we're looking for a motion to amend the two thousand sixteen class four trail and highway policy.
I'll make a motion to, um, amend and revise the two thousand sixteen class four trail and highway policy. Can we, can we just take the two thousand sixteen out there and just add my high school trail and highway policies part of my motion?
Um.
Doesn't matter what year it is.
I have it here as, uh, class four highway and trail policy revised September eighteenth. Would that not be?
Yeah, uh, uh, I was gonna take out two thousand sixteen from the title. Is that screw everything up?
And went on tightening now?
Sorry, you're good. Well, I just, so if we're moving into the future, will it be a problem to just call it class four trail and highway policy? Why do we have to say two thousand sixteen?
I would think that the newly adopted policy would supersede any of these policies.
Can we just take that, that, that year off the hand? Okay. That's my motion.
Anybody care a second? What's that again? Right, any further discussion?
Can we hear?
You might be stating your question.
No, no, about the motion, what changes we're making in the policies.
Yeah, we all got a copy.
Last, so you.
Here, last time.
So we are simply adding under, uh, point three maintenance. Um, in, in point number four, which states it is the responsibility of the town to maintain culverts and bridges on class four roads. Here, we can then. And this is so, uh, it will make it clear when we're applying for FEMA and other standards that that if we have to cross over onto class four roads, then from my understanding, Linda, FEMA will then consider giving us.
Right, Kurt asked, actually asked us to do this. Um, if this damages to culverts or bridges on class four roads, FEMA will not cover it because we did not have anything in writing saying that, uh, we do, but it has been our practice for years to do that. So we're just cleaning it up. And the next one.
Well, my problem is on the Turcoth Road. At the end going up through to the Round Barn property? Those are all just horns, whatever, it's just pimply and blue culverts. Are we looking responsible to replace those?
At some point they, uh, blow out.
I don't know about.
That's reclassified to. Trail though. Does that turn car road all the way up through?
It basically ends at the last residence driveway and then it goes about a few miles more up. And there's a lot of old culverts up in there.
Are they permanent homes or are they just?
They're hunting camps.
Because I know they had to get up there to make that road passable anyway.
Yeah, but doesn't mean they put in eighteen inch culverts.
They put in some culverts.
And I haven't been up there for five, six years now.
Well, that's what it means. We're gonna put them in.
Yeah, you know, we're kind of stuck with the present. I think, we're, traditionally, we've been. Fixing those.
Mm-hmm.
And want to give the inverse, we gotta have that in writing. If want to get reimbursed for it, then get, or get reimbursed.
That's just making policy follow practice, I suppose.
Well, actually, yeah, it has the policy, it's been there under this. Sort of.
It has a plan.
Yeah, so that we've been honoring that, oh, now we just want it actually in the policy.
So we took the plan and got rid of it and took the wording from the plan and put it in a policy.
I think we're stuck in the present.
So uh, just to kind of restate the motion, the motion is to amend, accept the plan we were presented with last meeting. Uh, that will supersede all previous class four trail and highway policies. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So can we second this down?
Right, so. Now, now this generator, we won't hear.
Um. So for the generator, we had a second bid. It's a great call. Farmyard store came in at um. Seventy-seven hun- seventy-seven fifty for the generator, a gen rack. Uh, with five ninety, or five thirty-five for a five-year extended warranty. And two hundred fifty dollars annual maintenance agreement that is billed annually. Post. Um, once the, the service is completed. Um. So they will not, they will maintain it as well, our, our question. Um, they came out Monday, so I still got another bid. He, the guy who came out Monday told Bob that. He thought. It, as far as hours, use hours, it's still real low end with hours and he said. Um, it might just be worth repairing. So we're waiting on that. And so my report is still, I don't have that information yet. I don't know if you're not getting that information. But um, I also contacted Brookfield to see if we could get that eighteen hundred dollars back that we paid them for the repair. And they said, well, they didn't came out and charged six hundred thirty-one dollars to repair something. I said, well, why wouldn't you repair something if you could see that the, the engine's not working? And so to repair, the guy who repaired it said, um. Uh. That he started by performing a visual inspection and all looked okay. The oil was full and clean. He replaced the oil pressure, pressure. Switch on the engine and then decided to diagnose the over crank concern. He attempted to start the engine and it did not sound healthy. And then he checked the valves and the spark plugs. Everything looked good. He spun the engine over by hand. They put the valves to correct position, but they didn't move at all. So either the crankshaft. Or the gear, crankshaft gear or rotor failed. So I said, you know, I kind of feel like we put the horse, you know, the part before the horse. So we're still in dis- in dispute as to whether we will get the um, six hundred dollars back. They will give us the twelve, the eleven seventy. But I think we should get at least part of that six hundred back.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Still in dispute on that plan.
Lloyd's, bitters, you know, they didn't get it.
So I actually went out and I was leaving and ended up talking to that guy for a long time. He was really good.
Right.
Yeah, so he, he was amazed. We hardly have any hours on that generator. He thinks we should just fix it. Um, he thinks that just the uh. He thinks it's just not lining up.
That'll tie my home.
Yeah, something like that. Um. He was very knowledgeable, so I'd be anxious to see what.
And, and just to be clear, in that report, the text said he had them, he had it running?
No, no.
Okay.
He said it looks to be in running, working condition, so.
I thought there was something about the engine not sounding healthy.
He start, um. Bob said, when he arrived, spoke with Bob. And he said that the last week the generator didn't exercise. The generator was down in an overhaul over crank fault. Started by performing a visual inspection and it all went.
Well, it sounds like either there's a timing bell or gear stop.
Yeah.
And that's not very expensive to replace.
Well, either, I mean, we'll get that asked in the for, for next meeting anyway. The, the thing I'm wondering about is. With this six hundred dollars, the way I heard you read through it the first time, my understanding was. He had the machine running and then went on to say that he couldn't get the valves to blow, and I'm curious how he had it.
It's in a visual over inspection, visual inspection. You guys can't see that, should I?
I was gonna say, Don, can you put that on there?
Probably.
Okay.
So. They, he did a visual inspection, but he couldn't get it running. That right?
So he did a visual inspection and then he installed that, that, that um.
Pressure, pressure. See how oil party. When he couldn't get it running, those sound.
I have a question, Michelle. So I was showing him because um. We got some pictures emailed to us and one of them was all this snow in the generator.
That's to sell us a um, snowbot, like a snowbox.
But that isn't our generator.
Um, I don't know if it was actually.
Well, he said it was absolutely not our generator and I was thinking that he was just trying, right? To sell us something and I did not like that, if it was.
It was um. It was the, they wanted to sell us the, an angle iron snow stand at three hundred eighty-five dollars. And the photos. Didn't seem to be, I mean, I looked at it and I didn't see it either as, as. What are some factors? So I had put no on that one, Bob, and I had to.
But Bob almost built a little box and he really had snow on it, brought us some plywood to keep the snow on.
So for less than.
He said it doesn't matter. It goes in one vent. And um, it's melted by the time it goes up the other. You don't, we really need all of that. That wasn't, that's not a problem. And as long as we don't plow the snow on top of it, he said it's fine.
So it seems like the thing to do here is wait until next meeting when we hear what the repair cost will be?
Yeah.
All right, brings us to the opioid settlement files.
So, you know, we received the um. Settlement plus six hundred sixty dollars and sixty-three cents from a variety of sources like Walgreens and CBS. Um, we didn't know what to do with it. We thought we would put in a little library kind of. Thing here. Um. It didn't make a lot of sense for me to, to me to build something like that when I know that they're being built by um, the Lemoyle.
Recovers.
Thank you. That's the, the Lemoyle Central Vermont Recovery Center. And so I offered the funds initially to Hardwood Rescue and they couldn't really use them because they get free mark on. Um, Markham. So they sent me to these folks and we give them a thousand dollars annually anyway. I talked with um. Shannon Cardici. Cardici. Um, and she said, yeah, they can definitely use the funds because they are building one of those little shelf, those little boxes that anyone can go and grab. Markham. Um, and that they could also use. The funds specifically for opioid abatement. Um. And that's what is required by the, the settlement dollars. So. I just propose that we write the check and give them directly. To the Lemoyle Central. Vermont Recovery Center. Um, and uh, Shannon will send us a letter telling us what we. What they will be using those funds for so that we have it in our records. Um, but per the settlement, unless you use the funds for something other than opioid abatement, you don't need to do other course. So we just have it in her.
Read the book. Base side.
I think she said in Morrisville. I'm pretty sure she said there. But it could be useful, whatever. It's dead, I don't know.
Let's make the motion if we. Give the opioid settlement funds to Lemoyle Central Vermont Recovery Center. Second.
Second, Bill.
Through the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm thinking right through things. Uh, vote to approve to apply for a VHCP grant for the schoolhouse revitalization.
You want to talk about it? Nope. So we are moving um. Ahead, we're meeting twice a week, this new group with a grant to create this community trust. Um, we're asking for two things actually tonight. One is the vote to dissolve the. Um, Schoolhouse Revitalization Committee because that's a um. Select Board Designated Committee. And now it will become um. As we work on a nonprofit and. Kind of distance ourselves from the town. Um. We won't do that. It'll, we won't have to um, follow uh, public records, open meeting law and stuff. The whole idea is to. Create this trust, uh, which is a nonprofit, not part of the town. Uh, to raise funds for renovating that. And so it leaves us up to um. Seeing as we have, we are still part of the town, we're asking for approval to apply for the. Vermont Housing Conservation Board Grant, um, for some. Construction renovations. It'll be the end of the month. Because technically you still own a building and we still haven't gotten our nonprofit.
So the order of operations here is the board will need to approve. The application of a grant and then dissolve the committee. So that you guys can create your own nonprofit committee.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. All right, well, we're looking for uh. A motion to allow the school board or the schoolhouse revitalization committee to apply for a grant.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Second? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. We are ready to separate on the monitor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys look so happy for.
We have, we have a amazing, a amazing friendship. With this.
Right, so it sounds like we're looking for a motion to let the. School Board Revitalization Committee go. I'll make that a comment. Anybody want a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
So those meetings we have.
Yes, but I was waiting for the September.
Well, congratulations on your departure from the town. Good luck with your, uh, good luck with your endeavors. We look forward to seeing your lease agreement.
Yeah.
Um, next. County Transportation Advisory Committee.
That is required in the signature. So that is just placing, currently I think it is in Kurt, it's the ultimate.
This was Kurt and Lynn was Dylan and um. I'd like uh, Michelle to be the alternate.
Success.
For the um. Advisors and maybe. And, and so we do have to make the motion for. Eleven.
All right, well, looking for a motion to, who's on right now, Dylan?
Um, I believe so.
To replace Dylan with the Select Board Assistant. For the.
Alternate to the Transportation Advisory Committee. For three years. I'll make that motion.
Second, first, second.
I'll serve.
Uh, any further discussion? Now's your chance to third, Richard. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now we are looking at Heinz Road and West Hill Road. I believe they're on your desk.
I did have a question, Michelle. Never bother you while you're away. Oh, in West Hill, it looks like you need to, they need to clean up um, that. Culvert. Under those people's property.
Um, there might be a request for that. I, I really don't know. Part of this is what Dylan gives me, but it's not. So I don't fully understand. All the work that needs to happen.
So going to West Hill, Don Pupmain worked on it. It comes down the valley and then it crosses the road. There's a culvert. And it's on those people.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're right on the corner of Culvert and West Hill.
So it goes onto their, they're making the former, former created that. Um, so it comes out and then there's a whole ditch. And a big culvert goes across North Hooked Road and then down to the river. And that is all filled with gravel. I mean, and so. It's gotta be cleaned out as part of that property. That's why you see the water just. Going over the road because it can't get through the culvert.
Can the town do that?
It can, but all I'm saying is you're gonna have to get um, some kind of, so my. What I'm getting at is you need some kind of uh. Easement. Go in their land. It's not our land. It's not our culvert. So, but it needs to be part of the project and we need an easement.
But, I mean, you can talk me through. That process. So we need an easement.
We can't just go on somebody's property and start.
Thinking of being an outlet for that. He's reached out to me about, about having some of that work done.
I think we do have, it's the culvert on the left side looking, um, it's, I think I remember taking a photo of that culvert right there, that intersection on North, on North Hooked. And it's to uh, culvert replacement with stone apron inlet and outlet. Um, upgrading twenty-four inch pipe. So are we doing that?
Is it the road, is it the one?
That's part of the area.
On the road or the one on the property? I can show you a picture tomorrow and some.
I have to show you the photos that I have.
Yeah, okay, I'm just thinking about that uh.
Yeah, because I, my, my memory of talking with the landowner there. Was that the cross culvert from, what is that, the Lener property?
Yeah.
To his.
Yeah.
Is being overwhelmed.
It is.
Uh, that's probably the twenty-four inch with the apron. And then as it comes onto his property, for whatever reason, his driveway culvert is outside of our right of way. And it sounds like Don Pupmain did that.
Don Pupmain created that whole ditching thing.
Yeah.
Because before the water would just kind of fall over, so he created this new one when they um. Because before the water would just kind of fall over, so he created this new one when they um. Moved the driveway, cuz the driveway used to be on the north of Wilkett, and they moved it to make it safer.
I can show you, if you want to see it, they have it here, hold up, the rough coordinates.
Or we can look at it around there too.
So do we need, do we need a full fledged event, could we get an M O U with that property owner, has that recorded?
Well, you can get a temporary easement just to go on there.
That's the culvert roughly.
Yeah, so when I'm driving around, there's a lot of this.
This is something, all they did.
Well, so the culvert goes across. And then it's all full of gravel and then you're going.
This might be the culvert we'll replace.
Well, it's, it's not, this is not, not a lot of, I was, I was.
How do we protect the temporary easement to get onto the property, which again, I think, I think James would be amenable to that, how do we protect our ability to. Clean that, that waterway in the future?
I don't know, and I wondered if he had something, I never saw anything though. It could be in the highway, but I, I, I hate when these things happen, you know, back in the day and it was just an agreement. With the law since at the time, and they used to mow it and keep it clean, they cleaned it up great.
Is there a process where we could theoretically extend our right of way in that area and have that reported? Somewhere so that that area. Would become ours, we wouldn't need easement in the future? What that process might look like? Man, if, if that's even a thing that can happen, that would be the direction I would like to go is. To see the town expand their right of way on the first five hundred feet, say, whatever that dimension is of West Hill Road. That allows us to essentially protect the assets we're gonna place on this dude's land. You know, as, as he moves forward and sells and does whatever he wants to do, I want us to have something in place. It, because it sounds like we're gonna end up going to fill for the culvert that is at this moment outside of our right of way. In order to protect, to protect our town from it.
Is that like gravel and stuff?
I'm not sure, yeah, that's why I'm curious. Yeah, I, I don't know.
I'll check it out, I'll call uh Beyonce for Mount Agent.
Yeah, and uh like I said, it might be worth a conversation with James, I, I am positive he would allow us to be honest, like as long as we returned it to.
Yeah, I'm sure anyone would, it's just, you know.
I want to reverse it back to the way it was without. You know, speaking all dramatic, well, they don't.
Have you noticed there are some permanent agreements though?
Yeah, it doesn't stay.
That, that's probably easier than actually getting uh an extension of a right of land, I would think.
Yeah, well, it.
That's too permanent for, if I were to learn everything, well, it's pretty permanent, but you know, this is my agreement.
Yeah. Yeah, um they both achieve the same things, like supposedly doesn't matter. But they both allow us to be in there.
Whatever it would last.
It was shared right of way exactly.
Between the.
Talk about some sharing.
Are there any other culverts on the North Wilkett Road that Dylan's thinking of cleaning up?
I know he's gonna do the one just past the ball field, those are sitting at the old man's house.
Build a pile of gravel, stick it by my house, block that clog, culvert there before winter, that's gonna get paved with soil on the road.
I would like to put on your list, cuz they do, wherever there is a cone or barrel. That those projects get completed before winter. Because there's a reason why they're there. For danger and they need to like address them.
Not sure.
There's one like you, it's something, it's a huge hole going up town hill that has one.
There's still, there's still a hole, there's no cone here, but uh if you're leaving the North Wilkett Village. And you get past the red field, which I encourage you all, drive by and look at the old starting line, that's a new day, wasn't it?
There's that washout on the left side of the canyon, except that.
Yeah.
I want to grab that sign that's there, I just, we could use that little stand, I mean, is that a gravy that's still there? Is that ours? There's just a sign laying over on the side of the road that I don't know what the paving could look like. It's like a sign with a stand.
Oh.
Uh that might be, that might be bands, I'm not sure.
That could be them down there, they just have it out there now, it's in there using.
Yeah, but anyways, there uh, there's two holes between the red wheel and uh. Shed place. Those are the ones that I'd see, there's a small washout at the beginning of St. Hill, but that's always there, they graded it and they come back.
But there's a big hole going uptown hill.
Can we actually change, uh you say before winter, I wanna put a deadline on it, it is. Before the second week in November when rifle season opens, our road crew disappears. And before the year.
We can have a chat later, because I, you know, you should have a chat later. I would want to talk about Heinz though, Heinz had. The total of six culverts, four were to be replaced, and Dylan thinks that those, once they pull them out of the ground, are gonna show signs of damage. There are two new that are going in that personally, he's, has about ten thousand dollars left in his culvert budget. But all the culverts have been assigned to FEMA and I don't think they're all gonna fly and so. I think, and I talked to Dylan, he's like, do what you need to do, but I think we should drop those two new culverts from this bit. And just have four formally placed.
You say you.
He lets Randy wants to put in.
They're older, they exist.
There aren't, there aren't, let's leave it. And the rest are being upgraded, so the four replaced culverts are gonna be upgraded, so even if FEMA covers them. They won't cover the upgrade costs and we would be on world paying the cost for uh from the eighteenth of July fourth.
Unless they made the closing stand.
But that's what we're going, I'm gonna talk to Jim tomorrow, we're gonna have to see if they need to stand. But I think basically approve it, and I don't quite fully, I, I don't fully understand the purchasing policy, but I think I can just go back. To the awarded, so in this case it would be uh for no, if he, if he is awarded. The bids for Heinz and just say we're dropping those two culverts and not have to put it out.
That's a problem, change order. It's good to have that admiring and in contact though.
Uh yes, I also wanna say that uh we have not dealt with them, this is very inferno. Um so I talked to Lucian, he suggested that we get a reference, so I called the town of um Calais, Calais? Alice? And I'm speaking with the, she was on the select board, Annie Tilkton, I think. And she was on the select board as well as the road commissioner at the time. I'll be speaking with her, um he has been doing work for fifty years in the state, bridge work, disciple work. All of it, he's been around, asked very knowledgeable questions um and. Uh he has spoken with uh Dylan about the project, he was talking with Dylan about if he still want it yesterday, and then he asked him about Heinz. So he's fully aware of what's going on there, some of the project. So given that, I think he is, given what Lucian wanted to know. I think we should have seen his approval to select area four behind and then, because he's the lowest bidder. And then I add the kingdom for uh as the lowest bidder for West Hill.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion to approve Pinkham Timber for the Heinz Road or West Hill Road and LG. Burnout Forest or the Heinz Road? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Oh my God.
I'll make the motion. Thank you, Richard.
Is that any?
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you for coming now.
Um you can also amend the duty, you weren't talking about snow guards at the left there.
But we got the second bid on snow guard, well, for the roof. One bid was to do snow guards and one bid was to do um. Uh the, the actual structure. And so the snow. So we had Saint Carpentry said that they would do uh for three thousand seventy-nine dollars, they were gonna put bill. Um uh shed style roof over. Over like a. More of a, sort of a roof over the actual entrance.
A little game.
Is in the store, that, that's why I was said probably known to that one and then decided to get a. Decided to go with a bid on these snow guards, they can come in any color, but they gave us. Uh a graphite grade in that, the slade, so this is what they would look like, and they would be staggered throughout the roof and catch the snow. And that bid came in at twenty-nine ninety, well, a little less because they charged that.
Where are we getting this money?
What, I don't know, I inherited this.
Oh, really? Um I guess we would have to uh look at what money we have in building maintenance. And you've already spent, remember, you've already spent.
The generator.
Forty-nine tonight for lights.
Uh we haven't.
Already.
We didn't vote on that, so you haven't said yes to that yet.
These lights?
I don't believe we have, no.
Oh, did they?
I don't believe we're voting on that yet.
Oh no, I think we're coming to that.
Yes.
I mean, it could, we could see after the generator, you see, because we had, it's scratching, I mean, about six thousand, eight hundred. So we could wait, see it after the generator, but I don't know if it's possible to be that, this was just Bob saying he doesn't want shovel.
Yeah, well, I guess we need a, you know.
He said it's dangerous when people.
It is dangerous in front because that's why it was always used in the back, there's a snow guard in the back. And people would come in the back door.
We just lock that door off? Then we don't.
Right, um. What we need is a printout of what, where we stand financially. I mean, it's easy to spend somebody else's money.
I, I wonder if there are alternatives also for keeping that, that space clear, if we could do, you know, some kind of. Snow mat or increase salt budget or maybe buy them either from, or make the ice float away. Or hang some watch for falling snow signs directly from the town, maybe ADA ramp to the back door. Which would allow probably more time to clear that path.
Right, cuz he's not here.
So the trouble is if he doesn't clear it, then it freezes.
Yeah.
Yes, it's horrible, yeah, that, that is the problem.
If it wasn't a historic building, it almost needs a cover for it, if it wasn't historic.
Do we need to snow guard the entire thing? Could we snow guard just the whole of the door?
That was my suggestion and Bob said, I don't, he, Bob said it's just dangers along the whole thing for wheelchair access of the ADA.
Is he willing to put twenty-nine hundred dollars on the line for that? We're accepting donations.
It's supposed to be for you and I'll tell.
Twenty-nine thousand?
No.
Twenty-nine hundred. Well, can we just look at whether, where we stand with the budget?
That'll be.
Have Belinda send it. Budget hearings coming up? But we, we would need our, we would need that anywhere, as people.
So the other, the other thing that you had mentioned earlier was, was the lighting, I heard you, you kind of went through it.
Yes.
Fifty-nine fifty was the whole estimate, whatever, with the thousand dollar grant. To update these uh scenes that we're gonna kick the can on, snow guards until we have a better understanding of our budget. Would it be reasonable to do the same? Do we have a timeline we have to meet with these lights?
They no longer make the replacement bulbs and we don't have any replacement bulbs, they're very difficult to get, so now we will just be running to replace these, that's our timeline. And the bids will go, I mean.
Would you, worst case, do part of one area at a time?
We could, well, we got the grant to do all of the areas, so um if we had to amend it, like cut off the library, we'd get less money. And the grant would go away. It's just about, I mean, a thousand dollars.
I think we're gonna have to see what we got budgeted before we.
There's nothing in that um bird that.
No, no.
Uh the energy report.
No.
No, that's why Victoria sent me over to uh Efficiency Vermont, that's why I supplied for it there.
I also wonder if it might be worth. Who, we had somebody do some work, um they added some exterior lighting on the highway garage. And I thought the price for that was incredible, I cannot think of who that contractor was.
I don't know, I thought Bob like.
Bob, yeah, Bob gets his, his business favors.
Yeah, well. We'll start with.
It's a race to change, I think it's much cheaper. Are, are the LED lights brighter?
Yes.
And so I'm wondering if we would need as many lights, it wouldn't have to be a one for one, one for one replacement if the LED lights are brighter. Um I asked about that, I asked if they were gonna be too bright in here and they said, they basically said you should just replace them all. But they, I, I've been in schools when they, they done the replacement and they're bright. So it might be for checking in if they would be too bright, what do you do then, you just take the bulbs out of the others?
No. You just leave them, just run them. At least you put them on a re- stack where you can adjust, but then that's not good.
You can't replace them after a certain time, so you just, I don't know, can they run both LED and? Floresen?
No, I don't think the idea would be that we would replace rather than the eight tubes or four tubes. This half, that half.
You can buy them in different lengths.
Well, yeah.
You could cut that from being eight foot probably to a six foot.
The current estimate is not to replace fixtures, though, it's just a retro of these fixtures.
Yes.
That saves a lot of money.
That's where I.
Yeah, that's a lot of money, just a retro, yeah.
But there are, let me tell you how many fixtures you have, so it's, it's um to do. Eighty-three total fixtures and then cans, nineteen total cans. And Bob insisted that those cans be replaced and I thought that we could buy just regular LED bulbs that go in there, and he said those aren't LEDs that are. Those are um.
You can, you can just buy an LED light. As we're talking about, you can just buy a, an LED retro can that screws in like a regular light bulb, but has an LED wafer that. Fits in that same can. Yes.
That again to mouth.
Yes. Like they made those Home Depot sales, I believe the brand is Halo.
So it's all the retro?
Yeah, can, an LED can retrofit. Not that expensive either. Not that expensive either.
And we have that electric, obviously, north of so.
You know, electric. I just quickly found it on Google, like I'm gonna give you an explanation. For an idea of how to build. Yeah, I, I realized there's eighty-three. Eighty-three culverts in this, and two cans, but still, still, seems like a lot.
So you want another bid? I pretty much thought you would, but. Trying to get, get this to happen.
Could be dry front porch form. Could be dry, also dry front porch form, branch. Electricians in town, certified electricians that want them.
Which is, I'm gonna find Frost Room, I can't even think of his, he's a lamp man, but I don't know his business is. Uh, is he a lamp here, or is it Arthur O'Fay? O'Fay, okay. Yeah, he, he installed the generator here, and he didn't wanna. Put it back out.
No.
There are a couple other local guys, that might be interested.
I don't, I don't know if the grant is tied to, or has submitted to build, um, it, but maybe we'll get, I don't know.
What about that Matt Dewey? Yeah, the dude that helped you with your thing, he was reasonable, he gave me four hundred bucks, get it in here, he wants to, uh, you can send him an email, see if he wants to take it later. See what he would say. Okay, so we're gonna kick the can on that one too then, I suppose, he has any opposition? The, the only problem with Matt Dewey, he's like two months out, every time I talk with him, doesn't sound like that would be a problem, I don't think that the grant has a specific timeline. So, I said, no specific expiration date on that grant.
Not soon.
Um, which brings us to talk about lights, we talked about snow guards, uh, item G Michelle has updates on property values. On the agenda.
I have no idea what it means, I have no idea.
Need to put it on. He said, uh, put on property value, uh, property values.
Good chat.
You mean buyouts?
I, I think it's not property values, but it could be buyouts, I'm not sure.
I don't know what property values may be, I can give you an update on buyouts.
Sounds great, let's call it the type.
Did I tell you that we uh, got a team for three more?
Now, which three?
The uh, one in the North Woken Village that's hanging over, um, Oscar Woods that's lying out now. And this one, this yellow one here.
If they approve.
Four, nine more.
Yeah, if they approve the one in North Woken Village, perhaps that patient come?
Yeah.
Yeah. With Oscar Wood.
Yeah.
Yes. Yellow house here, okay?
Yes, next to the uh,
Fresh.
You know, Barbara elders.
Yeah, fresh, yeah.
That's, that means anything.
Same, it's like, we can easy jog the slide there, lots of elevation to hold it.
Yes.
Not so long as that goes. Well, it's not the greatest.
No. No, and the septic is.
Uh, no, it sounds like it's right on me. It's. Forty-one is the one next to the uh.
Fifteen.
Town hall, one.
Six ninety-six North Woken, and thirty-six seventy in North Woken. Anyway, they've gotten approved, and um, any of those straps uh, will be closing on the town. And they're coming together, anyway.
You said there was nine, though, that we lost, and one you've got gives.
Yeah, that's closing the twenty-fourth, so um, Berners, Paul Pearson, Ramon, and David Lawrence, those three um, have to go through FEMA. They have no money.
Um, they're frozen anyway. Um, on the ones that have been approved, of our timeline, when did, like, when does the demo, what uh,
So that, as soon as we close, then I'll have to uh, put that out to bid to demo. And that brings me to a question about, um, so the property owners, I've kinda let them take a few things that they wanted from the home. You know, there's a few things like a light fixture that, you know, Tammy got from her parents or something. But um, other than that, what are, there are good, there are good things in Tammy's house. And I hate to just have them trashed, but I don't know how to distribute it. I know that this guy here, forget his name, he wanted, you know, garage doors, and kitchen cabinets, and blah, 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 and boring, but, it's like, no, no, then we gotta figure out some fair way, for people to take it, so they don't just get trashed, you know what I mean?
So, at the, just helping me with the process here, at the end of closing town owns the building. And we have a certain number of days to demo the building and turn it into a grass over lot, yes?
Right.
So that would mean that we're in, the town is in possession of any of those salvageable items?
Right.
So what would it take to have asylum auction, or something of that nature? Even the demolition?
Yeah, there's nothing worth it in those two up there, and I think with Tammy's it is, I mean, I'm gonna let, I let her take her washer and dry out her dishwasher, there's a few things, I mean, she can take what she wants, but when it starts getting to be other people wanting stuff first, it's like, no. Yeah, we could do that.
Something, something in that regard, and, and maybe as a part of the RFP that we put out for the other buildings. Just throwing word wide out here, but we could throw something in about preference given to, you know, demo companies that could salvage building supplies or something to that nature. I know when they did it in St. Johnsberry, took them up there because of the flooding, they basically had volunteers go in and take the materials out, and then it was set out, and you just went and ran, you bid it on it, the next day it was decided, it's gone. And what's the, something like that wouldn't cut into our timeline, how long will we have in order to? Store that?
Well, originally I thought it was the end of this year, but uh, with those three, added houses, it's the end of next year.
So we theoretically could maybe fold the asylum auction into a town verdict here.
Mm-hmm. That's something.
Something.
Do you ask me practice, given the companies that can actually do the salvaging, like pull it out first?
Just, just. No idea, just to, we're throwing up, so we haven't decided.
So that would cost a lot more, because that would.
We don't pay anything.
For solving?
Well, we don't pay anything on buying them, or lawyers or anything.
We don't pay for demolition?
No, I guess uh, I just build the state, I have a grant, for about a million something, to buy the three houses out, and to do the lawyers and title searches and, demolition, it's uh.
Yeah, the only, I guess the only other thing kind of on my mind is if we were to look for volunteers to do the salvage work, uh, we should maybe look into what the insurance might look like for that. If we own the property, or we might have, it's a potential, but. I also wonder, uh.
Well, we are gonna put it out to shit, demolition, because it has to be done a certain way.
Right.
Yeah.
The, the whole demo, if, if we could set a team of volunteers in there to do the salvage work ahead of time. Just because I'm not sure. But anyway, I, I don't know if that would look like a straight idea. Here's some concern, I don't know what FEMA's holding the bag to this, but the septic system for these places.
I think they probably have to be taken out.
Taken out, or, or at least launched.
So I um, I don't, I don't know about the septic, but I learned from, the uh, North Woken Ball Field that we are fixing, they came across an old well,
Mm-hmm.
that hadn't been capped, and I, somehow you were supposed to cut it down a foot or something and cap it.
You go to cut it below ground.
It hadn't been done, so I learned that.
Because that from uh, Ed Anderson's place?
One of them, there were, there were two of them there.
Two houses there.
Yeah.
I wanted to, Ed Anderson's place on that, no, we pretty much took that.
The men and I, and, and Anderson's were, were.
I don't think they did that. Like my house.
No.
No, but I, and I haven't read this, but it's my understanding that when we go through this process, all utilities have got to be decommissioned, well, septic, power, everything has to be removed, get the handle filled.
Would be like, you'd have to do something like this, you'd have to, yeah, you'd have to get them out.
I think it'd be easier just with the septic tank to fill it with sand than we need it, if you can pump it out and fill it.
Oh, they have.
Well, I mean, fill it, it's gonna.
Yeah, we have to do, we have to uh, take that, a woodshed out carefully, because it's kind of in an historic section or something, archaeological.
There's not a great job on that ball field, so, it's kinda hoping they make it with fake and, we cut the river channel where they land it, because that north end, even with those logs in place, the floodwater is good, I hit that like a hammer. I don't know, but the whole of it's.
Well, the whole idea isn't that to hold it, the whole idea is to um, protect the road, but allow it to flow.
Yeah.
So they've opened it up and changed the parking area and everything, so it can flow.
And they cleared that back channel, that's full of trees in back.
But I wanted to tell you that the state is going to allow that sugar maker to stay.
Oh, fantastic, nice.
Uh, Michelle helped me send a map in and a letter of request, I, I didn't think it would happen, but they're waiting to write the wording, and I told them once we owned it, um, we would need to sign a new lease with him.
But they're gonna let that structure, his pump house, stay, that is awesome news.
And he was with Tammy, paying her a dollar a ton. Fifteen hundred dollars a year.
That's pretty cheap, though. Even stills.
Well.
It's better than nothing, but I mean, that's usually they pay by the, is sugar content regaled? Is the town, are we gonna be able to charge that, or are we gonna be able to?
Yeah, I am.
Fantastic.
It's on our land, and they're letting us.
Awesome.
Um.
Just enough there was some rules around that.
Do you want that in minutes, what they were getting?
Just that, that, that the state is going to allow to remain there. All right, I'm ready. Make the motions.
That's it, folks, we got a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion that we adjourn.
Who wants the second? Well, I think it's my first day here.
Leonard, we don't take that as a second, all in favor?
It's a vote.